Well, good afternoon, everyone. It's nice to see you all here. Have to say, I think it's really great news with what we just saw happen today, this morning and early afternoon in terms of our upcoming fiscal year budget, both operating and CIP. And I'm extremely grateful to council member and Budget Chair Ann Kobayashi for her hard work and every single one of the council members for, at the end of the day, coming together and putting core city services first in the City and County of Honolulu. And it couldn't happen without the team that stands with me here today, both Nelson Koyonagi and Gary Kurakawa, and of course, Amber Shin, our Managing Director. And I would like to particularly thank Amber for her really hard work. She keeps all of us on a tight schedule in terms of the budget. I'm very grateful. And I think we're working closely with the council. Sometimes it was a little rough. At the end of the day, resulted in a budget where we remain committed, again, as I say, to core city services. And as part of an example of what I mean when I talk about core city services, one of the major jobs of any mayor, anywhere in the country, is public safety. And just as you know, this morning, one of our firefighters was putting out a fire over in Kailua and was injured, not critically, and he's going to be okay. But this is an example of finding funds to make sure that our first responders get the benefits they need, the pay they need, their training they need to make us one of the safest big cities in the United States of America. But the other core city services that we focused on in this administration for the past year and a half and will continue to do so are things like road repaving. So it looked like for a while that we were okay with our road repaving. We went in with $140 million request. It looked pretty strong. We're down at 132. And in the last days of the budget cycle, it got knocked down to about 100. Very concerning because it would have a negative impact in our ears in terms of road repaving. The good news is the council came back and restored the funding up to 132 million, and we're very grateful for that. Our parks, talk about our front doors, we need to treat them, I mean, our front yards, and we should treat them like our front yards. Good news there is we have $65 million in operating expenses to make sure our parks are better maintained and look and feel different when we go into them. $39 million for CIP, that means for construction, making things better in our parks, like our bathrooms, playground equipment and so forth, and $5 million for some legacy projects like Ala Moana Beach Park, our People's Park, that all of us use no matter where we live on this island. Thomas Square, our oldest park in the state, one of the oldest in the nation, was a park before we became part of the United States. And of course, our Blaze Dell Corridor. These are things that we're very, very excited about. Bus routes, as you know, we came in and the new administration restored nine routes. And we continue to look for funds to continue to restore more routes. And the good news is the council actually gave us $5 million more to look at route restoration. So we're going to look to see where we put them into place. Of course, we'll work with the council members. We're going to make absolutely certain it's where the community needs them most because our bus transportation is about social equality. It's about making sure that those who cannot afford to travel by car every day have another way to get back and forth to and from work, to get to the doctor, to see their family, and just live a better life. And then finally, sewers, $270 million for sewers, something we absolutely need to do if we're going to build housing for that next generation of young folks that are coming up. And of course, rail, that's a separate budget item, but rail, as we all know, is on track. Some of the other things I want to talk about that came into play throughout the budget cycle was our very, very ambitious Housing First approach. As you know, this administration, from the time we came in, have been working very hard to address the evolving and changing problem of homelessness. And one thing we did is we took a more aggressive but compassionate way to approach it through our stored property ordinance and sidewalk nuisance law. We had crews out there more often, and then we had a permanent crew that we put together that was going out at 2:00 in the morning when parks are closed and moving people and stuff off of sidewalks so that our sidewalks and other areas remained open and free for everyone. And we've had some visual positive impact. You go to Thomas Square, it looks really good and has been for a long time. In Haupt Park has been looking good for quite a long time now. Going into Waikiki on Kalakaua right before the bridge, looking good and has been for a long time. Other areas have not been looking so good like Waikiki. And so, one thing, we've had our crew in Waikiki for two weeks now. I went there last night before the sunset, spent three hours walking around. It looks much better. Police officers came up to me and said, "It's much better." Residents who walk around there came up to me and said, "Mayor, what are you doing? It looks so much better." But these kind of things are just one aspect of it. We're going to do the compassionate disruption, hoping that people will move into shelters. But we've been told time and time again by the experts from around this country who have actual factual proof that it works, is we need to establish a model. We call it Housing First. You can call it whatever you want. It's permanent supportive housing. It's getting homeless, chronic homeless in particular, whether they be families or others into a place, a home, and then they're treated for their mental illness and addictions and get better. Because they say, "No, get better first and then move into a shelter." That never happens. And so, all we do is move people from sidewalk to sidewalk, to park to park, spending $15,000 every time we do it without the long-term improvement. And so, we needed the Housing First model. We put $18.9 million in, all coming out of Affordable Housing Fund. This is a fund that's been collected by half a percent, half a cent, half a percent?
Half a percent.
Half a cent, and it's being held. And we wanted to use that money. We thought it made the most sense. We weren't increasing debt. We weren't raising taxes. We were finding a fund that had not been used and applying it to Housing First. Unfortunately, that money went other places once our proposal went down to the council, not all of it, but a big chunk of it. And we struggled to try to keep it there. We also struggled long and hard to make sure that we had the administrative support. We need money to make sure whatever program we did had administrative support because the Housing First model is labor-intensive. We're taking people who have a hard time taking care of themselves, and we're putting them into a unit with other people living around them that expect good behavior. And to make sure that happens, we need the administrative aspect to deal with landlords, to make sure if there's problems, they're being responded to. And of course, we have to have the supportive services. That's, you know, the treatment for drug and alcohol abuse, for mental disorders, and make sure that they're getting better.
Healthcare.
Healthcare. These are things that are not cheap. The good news is, we do still have $3 million to jumpstart this program through rental assistance and for supportive services. Why do I like this? We need to do things quickly at this point, particularly in certain communities like Waikiki and Chinatown and the Lee Worth Coast. People are saying, "You need to act, and we don't have two or three years to see the result. We need to see results next week." And I'm anxious to do exactly that. And that's why I like the $18.9 million. But the good news, and there's good news here, is the council has come and recognized the incredible importance of housing our homeless, whether they be families, our chronic homeless individuals, our working poor, and our families who may not be as fortunate. And so, they've dedicated $32 million towards this approach. In the final days of the council, up to then, it was not really being discussed. Last Thursday, of course, they said, "Let's use $32 million, first out of a road repaving program," and then today, as you saw at the floor draft, out of issuing general obligation bonds. We're going to work really hard to use this money. This can only be used as CIP money. So unlike the money that was coming out of the Affordable Housing Fund, which you could use for all kinds of things, as you know, obligation bonds, CIP money can only be used for rehabbing of existing units, purchasing of buildings or units, or building units. And you can imagine, those three things I just discussed doesn't happen in a week, or two weeks, or even a month. It's going to take a while before we have the units in place to move people from a sidewalk park or street into a unit. And so, that's a little bit, while we appreciate the money, it's going to take a little longer to do. The other thing is because we're not using the Affordable Housing Funds, we're using general obligation bonds, issuing bonds that will be paid back over 20 years, that's about $54 million that we're all going to be paying to get $32 million worth of CIP money being spent. And so, I'm troubled, I'm worried about our debt service, but at the same time, we need to address our low-income working families, our homeless families, and our chronic homeless. And it's going to be a challenge, by the way, because you guys remember, 20 years ago, the City and County of Honolulu was in the housing business. Remember, Eva Villages and those kinds of programs? And we got out of the business. We have now been put smack dab back into the housing business again with this $32 million. And with no funding for administrative support, it is a real challenge. But we're going to look for every opportunity we can find. Pam Woody Oakland, where is Pam? Is here, standing right here. She's critical in this, and she realizes the challenge she faces. And as you know, her Department of Community Services does a great job with Section 8, does a great job with other aspects of our housing affordability, but she is going to be pushed to the extreme to get this program running. She's going to work really hard, and we're going to find every opportunity we can. We may not be able to spend all $32 million. We're going to spend what we can use effectively. We're not going to waste $1. We're not going to build, buy, or rehab a unit and not be able to place a family or an individual into a unit without success, because then we set the whole program up for failure. But we're appreciative of the council's commitment, dedication, and we're going to work as hard as humanly possible to make sure we're successful in this program. And we need to be, so we can do the enforcement part and then the housing part, and then I think we see real improvement for the long term. The other thing I just want to mention is, you know, last year, there was the issue of grants and aid. And as you know, a charter amendment was passed about two years ago, put to the people to vote on. They voted for it, where they said a half a percent of the general revenue would be set aside, that's about $5 million, that a process would be put in place through a committee that would score applications based on criteria set by the council, and there would be no earmarks, no political decision-making by individual council members for their favorite not-for-profit. And we all have our favorite not-for-profits. I have my favorite not-for-profits. But we said, "Let's leave it up to a committee." The committees worked hard last year. The committee worked hard this year. They scored, ranked, and what has happened is that, again, instead of living with just the $5 million that was set aside, they added another $5 million to grants and aid. Now, where does that put us in comparison to the state? Our operating budget just passed, was a little over $2 billion. What was the state's operating budget just passed last month? $11 billion. We both are spending $10 million on grants and aid, and I believe something is out of whack here. We have asked for increases in revenue. We have asked the legislature to give us more in TAT, and we did. We got $4 million. I wish we would have had $30. So to turn around and instead of using it for core city services, we're using that additional money, hard-earned taxpayer-paid money, to support different not-for-profits in an earmark basis. And I'm troubled by that. So whether I release this money, like I didn't last year release this money, again, I think the policy here is I'm going to honor how the people voted, how the charter amendment stands, and follow the process that was put in place. But overall, I'm really happy. And I think everyone in the City and County of Honolulu has to be very grateful to the City Council, to the administration, for coming together and putting together a budget that puts core city services first, front and center. And like any process, you know, things work out this way. You don't get everything you want. We didn't get everything we wanted. The council didn't get everything they wanted. And perhaps that's the best way that a budget process should work. With that, I'll open it up to any other questions. Has Amber got anything? Did I left anything off? No? Okay, yes.
Mayor, you said that you wanted to spend $18.9 million for Housing First. I think we all need some clarification as to how much the council set aside for Housing First, both in the operating budget and the CIP budget.
Okay. So, Amber, maybe, do you want to jump in and answer that part? Why don't you jump in?
$12.2 million in the CIP budget out of the Affordable Housing Fund and $3 million in the operating budget.
And that, both those, all that funding can be used for the rental assistance and the rent?
No. No, the $3 million can be used for any rental assistance program, but the Affordable Housing money still has to be used for acquisition and maintenance, rehab, but it's cash. It's not bond money, it's cash money. So we have a lot more flexibility in how we use it.
And then the $32 million?
And I want to ask, what Managing Director, when she says it's cash, you can use the cash and give it to others to do things with.
We can partner with other developers or not just buying it for ourselves and taking title, but we can partner with other types of affordable housing development where they will dedicate units to Housing First use, those kinds of things.
And it can help us implement the program quicker, right? Because there's others out there already doing this. We go to them with this money, say, "We want to partner with you," and they get it in the field quicker. With obligation bonds and CIP money, we have to do it ourselves, and that takes longer. And again, action is what we want to see happen more quickly.
Mayor, do you anticipate building new properties specifically for Housing First? I know there's the Waikiki project, but do you anticipate going beyond the Waikiki project?
We're going to look at everything, Andrew. And we will look at, are there units, individual units, we just rehab and make them work? We will look at any opportunities for buildings we could change over, and of course, building. And everything's on the table. We'll look at everything, and of course, my preference will be things that we can do more quickly. So for me, that's rehabbing apartments. I also favor more the scattered housing approach. I think that those who have been on the street a very long time, placing them in units around the city is better than creating one large building where everyone is housed, because people react in a negative way sometimes when people move into their communities. So I think if it's less of an impact, there's going to be less pushback. There's always going to be some pushback, and we all recognize that, but we have to live with this if we're going to really make a dramatic difference in our homeless population here on this island.
So council members targeted some of them, diverted some of the money into some of their own projects, you know, who was one in Waikiki, one in Iwate. Is it the administration's intent to carry forward with those projects as they had proposed?
So for example, the $4 million set aside for Waikiki, we actually met with the developer of that project. We're looking, like I said, we're going to look at everything. The fact that a council member identified a specific project where we didn't, we just put in the money, said, "We'll look at everything," we want to find out. So we sat down with the developer, we expressed an interest. I was hoping he could do it more quickly when he said somewhere in mid-2017, I was like, "Well, I don't know if Waikiki can wait to 2017." And by the way, that project, $4 million, gets you somewhere between 10 and 24 units. So that's not a lot of people. By 2017, I think there would be 10 to 24 more chronic homeless people in Waikiki. But we're going to look at it, and I think it's a project worthy of consideration. The Iwate project, we've had meetings both here in my office and outside of this office. And in fact, our Chief of Staff has met with some of the people in that area, some of the landowners, to talk about what can we do. So, you know, Councilmember Fukunaga has talked about this. We'll look into it to see what we can do. Again, there's no one approach here. This solving of our homeless challenge is multifaceted, and it's going to be in a lot of different areas. And we're going to look at the ones that make the most sense, get the largest bang for your dollar, and have the quickest impact possible.
Mayor, some of that money went to projects that didn't necessarily benefit the homeless, but folks who needed affordable housing. There was the Prosecutor's Project up in Makiki. They were talking about a Putty Foundation project in Kakaoa. Are those projects, you're going to be able to support?
Actually, you know, we had $2 million for this art loss. I think that's what you're talking about. So it is something we supported. But again, the $18.9 that we put in, when we put our budget in, was money that we wanted to apply to the most critical population, those who needed the most help, the ones who we're getting the most complaints from, because we believe the people of this island are demanding that that problem be addressed front and center quickly and first of all. And so, that's where our focus was. Now, some members felt we should look at other areas. We'll look at them. But again, my focus, I'm speaking just for myself, my focus, and I believe our focus, Amber, Pam, and the rest of us, is to address that most critical part of our population that's causing the greatest number of problems and the greatest economic impact. This is the population that creates issues on the streets. This is the population that ends up in emergency wards that we all pay for. This is the population that's negatively impacting our visitor industry experience, and that's why we're going there first.
So what does this do to the timeline? I mean, I don't think--
I just wanted to ask Gordon's question. I'm sorry. Gordon, you know, the Affordable Housing money has two restrictions. It has to serve the 50% AMI population, and the housing unit has to be held in perpetuity to serve the 50%. So those two projects that you mentioned, we will look at it to see if it can be, if Affordable Housing money can actually be used within those restrictions. So it isn't off the table. We just don't know these answers to these two restrictions.
But art loss is a great program, and it works well in other parts around our country. And we spent, you know, a number of meetings in here talking about the concept.
Mayor and Amber, you know, just given some of the ambitious goals to end chronic homelessness within two years and things, I guess having the restrictions on the money, though, how does that affect the timeline? I mean, does that kind of along the goal?
Tim, good question. I think any kind of restrictions or provisions on how we spend the money does make it more difficult for us to be as effective and as efficient and react as quickly. You know, we'll work within those restrictions. For me personally, you know, I would never make the promise that I can end chronic homelessness, but I can promise that I'll work as hard as possible every single day with the team that stands with me and the others in the city administration to address the problem and show improvement. And I believe we're showing some improvement, and with the funding that we've gotten, I think we'll show much more improvement and work towards addressing the issue of getting people out of streets and parks and into permanent supportive housing.
Mayor, you suggested that you weren't going to release the extra $5 million in grants and aid. It looks like the council added another about $40 million in other CIP projects to the budget. Are you planning towards that money?
I'll look at it case by case, and if a good argument is made, I'll look at it. Grants and aid, by the way, grants and aid is different than the council, as they call it, council ads. You know, the grants and aid is, because the reason why I stand so firmly on this is that I do believe in honoring the charter, just like our constitution. A question was put out by the council. This charter amendment was proposed by the council, saying, "Let's do it differently." And the people said, "Okay, I agree. Let's do it differently." So I want to honor that and not say, "Well, let's do it differently, and let's keep doing it the same." So I have strong policy reasons for it. On the grants and aid, I mean, for the GIA, CIP, GIA, I mean, CIP ads, capital improvement ads, I will look case by case, always being concerned about the amount of money that we have for debt service, our debt limit, and what are the merits of the project. But like all of us in the regional people, we'll say, "I'll sit down and listen to why, and if there's a stronger argument why, we'll go ahead and release."
Mayor, with this budget, is the city still at or below the 20% threshold for debt limit?
We are below. And we're always watching that.
Mayor, Ernie Martin had said that in the new floor amendment that just passed, the focus is going to be, at least the first priority is going to be the working homeless or homeless with families. Does that in any way hamstring you in terms of your initiative for the chronic homeless, the hardest-to-help, the street population?
So one thing I do want to emphasize, because it seems that it doesn't get through. When we talk about chronic homeless people, we're talking about families. There are chronic homeless families, and there are chronic homeless individuals. And the population changes where you go around our island. And our commitment is to house as many chronic homeless people in the communities that we find them. And so, we focused on three areas: Waikiki, Chinatown, and the Lee Worth Coast. If we get in the car and drive an hour and a half, well, now, maybe two hours, we'll see a lot of families, and we want to house those families that have been chronically homeless. And in Waikiki, you're going to see a lot of individuals, and we want to house more of those. So the focus is on chronic homeless, whatever type of homeless people they are. Now, I know there's a proviso they put in with a kind of an indication from the council that they want us to focus on the working poor and homeless families, and we will look at that, too. Of course, Pam Woody Oakland here, her programs are looking at those kinds of folks every single day. And the good news are, many families are housed, because if you're a father and a mother with one or two or three children, and you get an opportunity to move off the street or in the bushes into a shelter or into a house, what do you think you'd do? You'd go. And the good news is, we do house many of our families. The other side is, we house very few of our chronic individuals, because they don't want to go there. Okay on the street unless it's less convenient to stay on the street, or they get permanent supportive housing where they can be, their illnesses and addictions can be addressed while having a place to stay.
Mayor, Councilman Ikaki Anderson pretty much gave it to the state for only setting aside $1.5 million for Housing First. Being a former majority leader, anything that you have to say about the, I guess, the $1.5 million?
You know, I think this, I would like to see the state step up and do more. I believe that they have the financial wherewithal to do more. They also have, you know, the personnel in place. But just like us, they're struggling with which is the best way to approach it. And of course, the state does have a lot of housing properties, that they're housing people who have an issue, have problems finding housing. And by the way, if the state didn't have all those units, I'm talking about the tens of thousands, I think, probably, they would be homeless, too, and on our streets. So I want to give credit to the state for their part of it. There's not just one way to approach it. You've got to keep those who are on the verge of becoming homeless or falling into homelessness, and the state is helping tremendously with that. But I think we need to look for more support from the state for our Housing First model, because I do believe it works. You can hear Colin Kippen today talking about it. He's committed. The governor and I have a strong working relationship. We meet on a regular basis. We've been talking, including, you know, about other initiatives we've been able to do that deal with Housing First. But I share, Ikaka, Council Vice Chair Ikaka Anderson, I guess he's calling out to the state, and I think it's a fair call-out.
Can you speak briefly about the hoppy sale and the machinations that have been going on? We've heard from the Managing Director, we've heard from Pam about it, but can you give your thoughts on where this is going?
You know, I was very disappointed that the hoppy sale failed the last round. And for me, I've spent most of my life in the private sector, and I always, my experiences from when I was on the other side, is that the private sector is always worried when they deal with government at any level, because in politics, you know, it's about politics, and politics can change how things go as you move down the pike. And so, we had people working on this sale for almost three years, and at the end of the cycle, politics kicked into the process in terms of, you know, resolutions being put in, and then even arguing about how the money was going to be spent before the money was actually, there was no sale yet. And it fell apart, unfortunately. So now, we're starting again, but as you can see, there's some politics entering already in terms of restrictions and how it can be done and where it's going to be done, what units and what place. And I am concerned that one, those who are still interested may get a little shaky, thinking, "Oh, we saw what happened last time. Do we really want to engage in this?" We may lose some very solid, serious, interested parties, and they may walk away. And we want the best bids possible. So my request would be to everyone step back from the politics and let the process work itself out and not to micromanage this. If it doesn't work, we could end up with a failed initiative two or three years down the road. And here's the sad part. One, we spend $7 million every year in lost revenue because of the projects, the 12 projects we have. And two, I do believe that the private sector, under proper management, will do a better job and actually create buildings and units that will be better for everyone that lives there. And so, I support this, but I'm concerned and worried that perhaps all the hard work will end up with not much to show for it unless everyone steps back and lets the process work itself out. And once the units are sold, if there's money on the table, then there can be a discussion as how it's spent.
Mayor, the last budget cycle, I believe you did not sign the operating budget bill. It sounds like everything that we've heard you say today, that you're leaning towards signing both the budget bill and CIP bill for this budget cycle.
So I will look, we want to see the final product that comes up. We'll give it to Corporation Council for a review to make sure everything in there is proper. At that point, I'll make the decision, you know, right now. I'm leaning to sign our budget, the operating and CIP budget. Of course, the Hart budget was also before the council, and in all likelihood, I will not sign that budget.
I'm sorry, you said you would not?
I would not. I'll let it go into law without my signature, as I did last year, as Mayor Carlo did his two years before.
Can you explain part three to why?
Because I believe that under the charter amendment setting up Hart, Hart was designated the entity to build rail, and it was to take politics out of the system, because before that, I was the Managing Director. I sat with Division of Transportation Services, of which the director was appointed by me. And I believe that people felt that instead of letting politics weigh in into how we build and how we spend the money to build, it should be done by quasi-independent agency. Again, I respect that. There was a charter amendment. So that the fact that the council reviews that budget, I think, is not appropriate, and I don't think they have the authority. I'm not going to veto it, because I believe in the rail project. It's extremely important. It's a game changer for our entire community. But I probably will not sign it. Now, again, it'll go before our Corporation Council for review. If the opinion or decision has changed, then maybe I would sign it, but I don't think it will.
Mayor, are you concerned at all about the very last-minute nature of the floor amendments Mayor, are you concerned at all about the very last-minute nature of the floor amendments that came forward? There's Ernie Martin's in there, and I'll tell them, and Anderson at the last minute proposed something today. Do you feel like you guys had enough time to review what they were changing and provide your testimony?
Having been in the State House and just being an observer, all, like all of us in the room of politics, it's something that is frustrating when this happens. I don't like it. I do believe that when amendments are done at the very last minute, particularly very large ones like this, where we're spending, you know, tens of millions of additional money, it'd been better to start in the beginning of the process. Quite frankly, I don't understand what became so urgent between March and now. We had almost twenty million for Housing First, and much of it was deleted. And then, three or four days before the finalization of the budget, all of a sudden, now we gotta deal with this problem. So that's frustrating for me, but at the end of the day, I think it worked out. I think Ikaka Anderson stepped in to try to salvage it. So when you have choices like this, do we cut, dramatically cut road repaving that everyone likes and everyone wants, and we're showing we're doing? Perhaps there's another middle way. And I think he was trying to find a middle way to do it. And so, I wouldn't fault the vice chair for, for trying. And again, it ended up with a budget that I said when I walked out here, that I'm very pleased to have. And I think because it preserves our core city services and improves what we're doing for all the people of the island.
Mayor, real quickly, tough sailing on road repaving. Have you spent all the prior year set asides for road repaving, and now that you got the additional hundred and thirty-two million for this budget?
So we're into the fiscal year fourteen money now. As you know, there's about a year lag. Because you, you get the money, you don't spend it the next day, right? You have to design the, the projects that we're gonna do. Then they have to be put out to bid, they have to be processed, and then awarded. And so, there is a lag, but the good news is, we've encumbered all of the, when I came in, there's twelve and thirteen fiscal year, twelve and thirteen money. We encumbered that. We repaved almost six hundred lingmiles at this point, I think, in a year and a half. We're way ahead of our, our target. And we are encumbering, we're eating into the fourteen fiscal year, which passed six, six months ago. And by July of next year, we'll have encumbered the bulk of that money, but there'll be, still be fourteen money. One thing I found out really quickly when I came on and looked at, you know, setting this very ambitious target for road repaving, is that the private sector says, we will ramp up, we'll hire more crews, we'll build more batch plants, we'll purchase equipment that we're gonna amortize over a number of years, if there's a firm commitment to fully fund this program. But if we, just like Hoppi, if we see you getting weak a year and a half into the program, and that was my fear with this cut of thirty-two million, it could mean we're backing off. We're gonna send our crews to other islands, we're not gonna purchase this equipment because you don't show the commitment. And I wanted to send a clear message every year that we're committed, so they're committed. It's a partnership here. And so, I think what we've done is by restoring the thirty-two million, we've sent a message to the private sector that repays most of these roads, that we're on a firm course with the backing of the council. So please, continue to commit in your capital investment, and we'll continue to commit the funds to repave all our roads in the next, now four years. All our bad roads, the forty-three percent that are substandard.
We got time for one or two more questions.
I'll stick around for individual-
I was gonna say, there's some bulky items.